On Monday, August 24, we'll begin with the call to order and Pledge of Allegiance. So if everybody can join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, with the public's consent, from nation under God, with the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda, public comment. Public comment, individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person with public comment not to exceed 45 minutes. Though the content of comments will not be restricted, it is the hope of this committee that the citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of others' right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for agenda items only. A second public comment session is available later in the meeting for all the topics or concerns. Members of the public are permitted to speak during both portions of the public comment periods. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record. Are there any members of the public here wishing to speak? Any members of the public here wishing to speak? Last one. Any members of the public here wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will now move into new business. I'm going to address the elephant in the room. First, I'd like to commend Superintendent Danbrook for staff and everyone else involved with recent events. Their professionalism, their leadership has been exemplary. At this moment in time, what I will say without saying too much, and the attorney has been advised to hit me if I do say too much, is that we have safeguards in place until the investigations are completed and until recommendations are made for us to make sure that future instances do not happen. That is one comment that I will make. Also, I will state that until further notice, all purchasing decisions, this is a safeguard that has already been instituted, all purchasing decisions, including decisions from subcommittees such as the Building Committee, must be authorized by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. There's no exceptions. The Building Committee does not have full autonomy. As such, all other subcommittees do not have full autonomy to make any purchasing decisions until they get full approval from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And we will be reviewing our policies for purchasing, procurement, bids, et cetera, in the fiscal subcommittee tomorrow. Those recommendations will then be passed on to the policy subcommittee chaired by Ms. Kirby Chapman and Ms. Hazelwood, and then they will be passed on to full committee for approval. So that's all I'll say on that. But I just want to commend the superintendent for her leadership and everything, and all the people that were involved. You've done a great job in dealing with a very difficult matter that we've had to navigate as a district. So with that stated, onto new business. Discussion action bid 25-002 Professional Moving Services, Dr. Taylor and Mr. Iafredi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, members of the school committee. We used to say good night, but here we are. So just a little overview, and then we'll move on to the recommendation. I was brought in by the superintendent to consult on the bid process and to be involved in the process for professional moving services. I thank both Mr. Godber and Ms. Oliver for their help throughout that process as taking tours of the buildings and working with different companies. We had two sets of walkthroughs, just to give everybody some clarity on that. We conducted our first walkthrough with movers on July 22. I call that round one. But what had happened was there was an error in the date of the day for the walkthroughs. So under an abundance of caution, we pulled that bid back, and we went out to bid again, and we conducted another round of walkthroughs, fresh start, on the 26th of July. And in that round, we had four companies that came through the mandatory pre-bid walkthrough. And it was a pleasure meeting representatives from all the companies, and it really was a pleasurable experience. And then from there, three companies bid and submitted bids. The bid opening was this past Friday, August 2, at 2:00 p.m. Certainly thank you too to Ms. Quirk and Ms. Polly for their work in organizing the bid documents and the calculations. That was a huge help. So thank you. So that brings us to this morning. This morning, the Building Committee convened. And as you see on the memo I shared with you prior to this meeting, everybody has a copy of it. The Building Committee voted unanimously, 9-0, that to award, to divide the bid award amongst two companies. The third of the three companies submitted an incomplete packet. So they were taken off the table, so we're left with two companies. So as you see before you, it's a recommendation from the Building Committee and acknowledgement of their vote to award the Holloman and Drumrock portion of the bid to Astro of New England and the Greenwood portion of the bid to Vito's Express. All things being equal, and I will defer to Ms. Testa from the sentiments of the Building Committee, that all things being equal amongst those companies as far as qualifications, even recommendations were vetted and checked, it came down to the lowest bid. And it was made clear to the companies, both in the pre-bid documents as well as both walkthroughs, that we would be entertaining bids either for the sum total, the lump sum total of the entire three bid move, but we also reserve the right to, and we ask companies to bid each job individually. And it was from there that you see the division. Those companies represent the lowest bidder on those particular jobs. Two lowest bidders to Astro, one lowest bidder to Vito's. So that just explains a little bit of the background of how we came to dividing that. And that was the vote of the Building Subcommittee. Having to take any questions, but we'd seek for favorable approval based on the recommendation. Mr. Iafredi can answer any questions as far as logistics. Ms. Testa certainly from the Building Committee or processes, whatever folks would like.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Before we take any questions, I'm looking for a motion to approve made by Ms. Backus.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Testa. Any comments from members of the committee?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Testa.
I would like to amend the motion to make it contingent. And before I get to the awarding of the contingency, I'll explain why. When the Building Committee awarded two jobs to Astro and the one to Vito's, during public comment, the owner of Astro rose and said he wouldn't accept the two jobs. He would only accept the entire package. Being that it was public comment, we didn't engage. So upon advice of our attorney, I would make an amendment to the motion that we would accept it contingent upon, and Andrew, I may need your help with the wording of this, contingent upon acceptance of all parties. So if Astro does not, if he holds true to his word and will not accept all three, I'm sorry, will not accept the two that were awarded to him, we would award the three to Vito's. It's, I would note that in the aggregate, Vito's was the lowest bidder for all three projects. The reason why we didn't pick Vito's initially was because the three, the references they gave were smaller scale projects. The references Astro gave were larger scale projects in line with some of the, at least the Holloman move. So my, Andrew, my amendment would be that we would accept this award contingent. How do we word the contingency?
I think it's my understanding that the project is supposed to start tomorrow.
Start tomorrow, yes.
So I would make it contingent on receiving notice from both bidders as they're awarded here by like 4 o'clock today that they're going to accept and move forward. And if they're not, then I think the motion would be to give it to the entire package to Vito's.
Okay, so. Teresa, did you catch that?
I've followed it.
You did?
So there's a motion on the table by Mr. Testa to amend the initial proposal from the Building Committee. I'll second that. Now we go into discussion on that motion to amend the initial proposal. Any comments? I have comments.
I know you do. I want to hear your comments.
Oh, you don't want to hear them?
I do. I do. I do too.
That's good for Astro. I, you know, great that they don't want to take this on if they're not getting the whole package. My belief is that obviously we know what's going on. There's an active investigation, and they're a part of it. And we're still, you know, we don't know if they had any dealings in it, but we're allowing them to be a part of this bid. And we're affording them that opportunity. So that stated, they have the chance to bid on this. We're the customer. And if they don't want the business because they're only getting a piece of the business, it's fine by me. The door's right there. Thanks for coming. Appreciate you playing. Grab your glove, grab your bag, go on home.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah. And I say that with all due respect. They seem like a very good partner of War College Schools of years. Of course, I don't have the day-to-day dealings with them, so I won't say anymore on the level of service they provide. But my feeling is, this is what the customer wants. This is what the Building Committee presented to us. So if the vendor doesn't want a piece of the pie, they want the entire pie, so be it. I will not support them getting the entire contract. And Attorney Heneas, help us out here. So if we make that, if we take Mr. Testa's amendment and we take your suggestion that they need to notify us in writing by 4:00 p.m. today of their intent to do business with War College Schools, would that require another meeting of this committee?
No.
Oh, so okay.
Because the way that would work, the way the motion is, the amendment is made, is if we don't have that assurance by 4, whatever the time is that you guys set for, 4:00 p.m. I think it was, if you don't have that assurance, then War College is just going to go forward and award the entire bid to Vito's and move from there. That's the way the amendment reads right now, so there would be no further action required by this body.
Okay, thank you. And my, so that's my thought on this. My question is, and it's to you, Mr. Testa, and Mr. Iafredi, and other members of the Building Committee who are present. Do we feel comfortable that one entity like Vito's can fill the entire need of the district so that schools open on time in a couple of weeks here?
If I, actually, I thought, Mr. Chair, you asked that question. So as part of the bid RFP, we requested in writing an assurance that they could meet the deadline as described by the Director of Facilities during our walkthrough. So that was made clear specifically when our deadline-
What deadline did you provide?
Specifically, starting tomorrow with the initial moves, but all moves before the end, before the end of the summer, before the start of school.
Did we give a specified date?
I'll defer to Mr. Iafredi.
Yes, on the bid package, there are dates for each move that we need them to start and finish. So they agreed to that, acknowledged those dates, and in writing, in verbally, confirm that they could meet those dates.
Is there any kind of liquidated damages provision if they don't finish on time?
I don't believe we included any of that.
So they gave you assurances, but they're not held to anything. So the assurances are
worth this piece of paper.
Yeah, great. Okay, so that's my first. But we feel comfortable that if Astro were to walk away today because they're not getting the full pie, that Vito's could do it?
Based on my conversations with the references I spoke to, they agree, experienced with them on multiple occasions with that information, I feel comfortable that Vito's could perform the work in the timeframe given. But we don't have experience with them directly with our district, so it would just be a fee line at that point.
Because you've got to understand that sitting here, we have, what is it, four weeks? Four weeks till the start of school. And there's, these five people and this lovely individual over here are hanging a lot on the line here. So if we feel good, I need a little bit more there. That's just my initial thought here. So with that, I've asked my questions. I've stated my opinion. I yield, I have Ms. Hazelwood and Ms. Backus.
Have they ever done anything at this scope of work?
As far as I know, the work they have done, based on the references that I spoke to, lifespan, and another vendor, the magnitude of the scope of work compared to what we do, I don't, I am not sure that scope of work meets our magnitude of scope of work based on my discussion with them.
And they have the employees right now on hand-
Correct.
-to be able to start tomorrow?
They have the employees on hand. They do sell out work if needed, but the chief of operations is present on each job. So that makes me feel a little better about their capabilities.
Thank you.
Hey, all set, Ms. Hazelwood?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Backus?
I concur with Mr. Gallagher on everything. And I think that Vito's is kind of spoiled brats.
Astro.
I think Astro's kind of spoiled brats. I don't know.
That you? Any other comments from members of the committee?
Yes. I would say that the bid was written very, very clearly. Everybody knew what the parameters were. Everybody knew how we could award the bids. There was no surprise in there. So to be honest, when Astro declined to just take two of the jobs, and said basically, "It's not everything, it's nothing", I thought that was an interesting business model. So at the end of the day, he was trying to argue that he bid it in the aggregate. So even at that, similarly qualified vendors, he wasn't the low bidder. So I'm not sure what his argument was. So, you know, both, these were the only two bidders that were qualified in terms of checking all the boxes with licenses and everything else. So, you know, Mr. Iafredi had a conversation with them. They received assurances. I, you know, originally, we wanted to break it up because we hadn't done business with Vito's before. So, you know, the thought process was, if they were successful, then it's another fish in the pond for us to cast for on future projects. So I just think, you know, I think to award, to acknowledge Astro's request, I think would be not the right decision to do. I agree with Mr. Gallagher. She's not the business.
Just know what you said, just because I wasn't there. Is that something we've done before in the past, that we always awarded him everything before, Astros?
No, that's, but we haven't done that much moving, so. But, I mean, he's been doing business with War College Schools for several years from when consolidation of schools, I think, happened. Right, Mr. Oliver, from then, I think. So that goes back to 2016, I think. So, but we never used Vito's before, so. But Vito's, I mean, all the paperwork and everything else, they're there. They've met all the criteria that's necessary for this, so. And I think, and I would also, to Mr. Iafredi's point, the jobs they referenced, it's a dollar value that was the difference, right? I mean, the dollar value wasn't as big of a dollar value, so that doesn't mean, you know, we're not quite sure what the scope of the work was. We don't have the exact job, right? But we just know what the dollar value of that particular contract was.
David, if I could just add, and I'm going to quote some information from Plan International as one of the references. The particular move that they were referring to was not an easy move. It was very delicate items and challenging, but they rose to the occasion. So, and to your note, it might just be a dollar value, the scope of work, and, you know, intricate items that need to get moved. I think they can handle it based on the information I received. I just wanted to add that. I also would like to see if, instead of doing 4 o'clock this afternoon to Astro, we do earlier, 2:30 if possible. So it gives us the opportunity to make those phone calls after and get work lined up for tomorrow, if I could.
Will we find any objections?
No, no, none at all. It's good work within your scope of range.
Are there any other comments from members of this committee?
The documents are in the Building Committee folder, and there's nothing that would stand out to me that it's not a company that we should go with. I think-
Not a company we should go with?
There's nothing that stands out to me that would say, "Don't go with that."
Okay. Any other comments from members of the committee? Ms. Backus?
I have a question through the chair of the superintendent. I thought we were doing an investigation on this, or we did an investigation. Is that correct?
So we hired an outside person to do the investigation.
And now the mayor is also having the state police do an investigation?
Mayor did call the state police to do an investigation.
I don't understand.
So our investigation is ongoing. This interview's going on right now.
Thank you.
Yield. Any other comments? So before us at this moment in time is an amendment to the initial motion to adopt what's before us from the Building Committee, from Mr. Testa. We now know that it's going to be a 2:30 deadline, as requested by Mr. Iafredi. I'll just conclude by stating, I appreciate the Building Committee coming here with two vendors as an option. Because when I was going through these documents last evening and preparing for today's meeting, my concern was, this is a big gamble. We have four weeks until schools open. And if those schools aren't opening, it's our heads. Everybody in this room that is putting this forward. So seeing that the two, that we went with two vendors, that way we utilize their manpower, their resources, and their abilities, that's great. But obviously, now we've heard that one of the vendors says it's all or nothing, so that's fine. It's okay. We'll move forward as such. So my only request to the administration, if you guys would like to go the route that is being proposed by my colleague, Mr. Testa, is that we know what you've done today. If you did in fact get confirmation from the other vendor, and if not, then we know what route we're going in. And both parties, all parties feel comfortable and confident that this is the route to go?
Yes.
Okay. We're opening schools in four weeks?
Yes. We have to.
Our kids can't be at home anymore while I'm working, while I'm working from home. For the love of God. All right, so one moment here. All right, so we have a, we have a motion made by Mr. Testa on, to amend. A motion, it was seconded by, do you have a second already on the amendment?
Yeah, it was seconded.
Yeah, we did.
The initial was, the initial was Ms. Backus, then you, and then there was, you made an amendment.
I made the motion to amend. I don't know if anyone seconded that. Do you have a second on that?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Hazelwood. You got that?
Yes.
Did that-
Go on, second.
Did I second that? All right.
You seconded.
Okay, great. All right, good. This is getting tricky. Okay. So now we've had our comments. We've got a motion to amend the initial proposal made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by me. Conuted. All those in favor of the amendment to the initial proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, 5-0. And now-
Now you need a motion to pass that as amended.
Motion to pass that as amended. Is somebody willing to make that?
Some.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Ms. Backus, Ms. Hazelwood. Any comments on that? You guys, thank God. All those in favor? Aye, motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you.
Mr. Iafredi, please just let us know by 2:30. Jen Y, you can text me, tweet me, whatever. Thanks. Next item, discussion action, contract award, first student number 19790 and 19789. Mr. McCaffrey.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the School Committee. We bring before you today a contract proposal for first student to transport our students to and from school. I would like to take a moment to thank the team that worked on this project, Kaila Quirk, Brandon, and Carl McGovern. We've tried to address all your concerns when it comes to such concerns as liquidating damages, as well as bringing technology within the buses, having cameras available to keep our students safe and to have a better handle on what's happening on the buses when issues do arise. The contract has been looked at by Aliw Leego, Mr. Heneas, he's giving it the blessing. Brandon is here to answer any financial aspects of the contract, as well as, we have two representatives for first student, Richard Caprero and Stephen Walker, to answer questions as well. I ask for your support of this contract.
Looking for a motion to adopt this item? Made by Ms. Backus and Ms. Hazelwood?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Testa. Any discussion? I'll make a comment. I love Section 18. Nice job, nice job, good job. You know, the concerns have always been with the public, the performance of transportation. So to Ms. Quirk, Ms. McGovern, Brandon, Mr. Bowles, I'm sorry. So sorry, went formal with the rest of the team, but not you. I apologize for that. Great work. Really happy with this contract. And I appreciate first student bending a little bit and having some penalties there. For the public's knowledge, if a bus is 45 to 89 minutes, we're only going to pay 50% of that route for that day. And if a bus is 90 or more minutes late, it's 100% off. It's a free bus. Although there was the cost of the children having to stand there and wait, and the teachers, et cetera. But at least that protects the district to some degree to holding the vendor to high performance standards, which is something we didn't have before. So I'm thrilled that we have a contract now with some grit. So I just, to everybody that was a part of this, as well as first student, we view you guys as partners. I appreciate you working with us and look forward to continuing partnership. And just for the public's knowledge, the duration of the contract is?
Three years.
Three years, so. I especially like the fact that we're going to have GPS systems within those buses. In speaking to parents in other districts, they like that they're able to kind of monitor their children like an Amazon package. Figure out where they are. So I think that's cool. And I like all the other features of this contract. So really excited about this upcoming school year. Looking forward to seeing what the lovely Ms. McGovern continues to do, and Ms. Quirk, and Mr. Bowles, and the rest of the team here at Administration. So I have no other comments on this. Any other comments? We have Ms. Hazelwood, then Ms. Kirby Chapman.
My, I love Section 18 too. I have it circled, highlighted. It was so needed. What I do have a question on is on the daily rates. Letter C says that price is based on providing two small buses, basically without a bus aid. Is there anything in the law that gives us a pass on having a bus aid? Or not having a bus aid? Because this says without a bus aid.
High school and middle school is not legally possible.
We're not legally bound. I just want to make, I wanted to make sure of that, make it clear.
We kind of adopted it during COVID, and if people are willing to ride, we do pay them to ride all three tiers.
And a lot of times there is a bus aid. I've been at the high school. I see that they, 90% of the time, I would say there is-
Little buses is legally, they always have to have. That's true for first student.
Okay, this says small passenger buses, 29 or less?
Because I was looking for an alternative to take my students to the other CTCs within the region that do not really require a larger bus. There's not enough of them. So I was trying to find other avenues that I wouldn't need. I would like to use a cheaper rate without using an aid that wouldn't be necessary within their high school.
So if we are transporting special education students on a small bus, there will be an aid?
Absolutely. They can't pave the yard without it.
Okay, that's, this is my question. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Hazelwood?
Yeah.
Then you, Ms. Kirby Chapman.
Actually, I'm wondering if we can also address publicly too about the changes that, besides the money aspect? Because obviously that is a big incentive. But what are the other things that we have in place to make sure that we don't have the same issues we did? Like, do we have more buses? Do we have, like, is there more buses available, more bus drivers?
Are you directing that question to the Administration or to first student?
Whoever wants to answer that.
And would the Administration like to start? You would prefer deflection?
No, that's okay. I can start. I did request more small buses because I had more locations this year. And then they assured me that they would be able to cover the buses that I requested. So I asked for 40 small. I only had 36 last year, 36 last year, which was a two-bus increase. And then I stayed with the 55. It worked fine last year. Well, if we have enough drive, it works fine.
Thank you, Ms. McGovern. Any, do you guys want to add any color commentary, or you're all set?
I can add, yeah.
Please?
Yeah, yeah. We, in fact, we did bring in 18 new vehicles this year. They all are in service at this point. We added four more routes to break to last year, for roughly about 100 routes at this point. And we have about 112 drivers listed ready to roll. So we've made steady progress with Empower. I just want to thank the district for the partnership we've been working with for close to 50 years already. And all members, thank you very much. I commend you. You're very thorough. I like your question. Does the vendor have the Empower? Do they have what it takes? Do they have what it takes? We volunteered this with the empty, so thank you so much. Great, great work.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Javon?
And then concerning the bus depots, did we address any of those, the concerns from the past couple of years? Are they, are they going to be the same?
Yep, they're going to stay the same then. It worked out okay because when we eliminated the N and O, we made one half of the city, one side of the post cross one way and then the other side crosses in the afternoon. And I do the same thing for Pilgrim, but I do opposite sides. And it is assisted, so it has worked out fine. And we really didn't have a lot of complaint about it this year.
Chair?
You all set? Any other comments from members of the committee? Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody involved in this. The total figure is 9.3 million. That's for this year, right? And then, then it goes up, right? So it goes up about 10% over the likelihood contract. Right? It's 10% for everything but extracurricular, driver hours and rates per bus day. That's the labor side of it. That goes up 12. So, and that's fine. I mean, you've got to have some sort of escalation to these things, I get that. So somebody mentioned cameras. The cameras, are they on the buses already? Or according to the contract, it says district may ask you to equip them with cameras and you would provide a cost. Who pays for that? It's going to, we pay for the cameras if we want cameras on the bus?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted, I wanted to make sure of that. And is there any plans this year to maybe have an app that parents can put on their phones, like where's my bus?
Okay, so I have a couple of quotes regarding passes for the kids that, and they'll, we'll know who's riding. And then we can, the biggest problem was the GPS wasn't really matching. So if Johnny was on Route 21 and that morning he was on 16, they're like, why it hasn't moved, you know? So we got, they're going to send me some reports. And as soon as we can get that active, again, we will reintroduce that.
No, I would like to see that. I think that as a parent, you know, if your child, especially on multiple kids and multiple levels, where are they?
What would be great is for the parent, like if they are running late, they'll have a little bit more, they don't have to stand out there for 45 minutes. They'll know to go out a little later.
Okay. And then last question I had, as far as the damages, the ducking depends, are we comfortable we have a good system in place for doing that?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a little more administrative work in terms of tracking it. So we'll just have to coordinate claims with Carla's office to make sure that we document any instances where buses are particularly late.
Okay. So I have, any other comments from members of the committee? On claims, it would be, are we looking at that it would just be credits with first student? They wouldn't be cutting us back a check, right, for?
That, that would be the assumption we have, and we haven't specifically discussed that aspect of it, but.
Well, usually what they've done, they just don't charge us for certain things if it doesn't run. So we just have to make sure that everything matches.
Okay.
And we do have a, we do keep track of everything. So all they have to do now is jot down the time. That's all that we have to change.
Fantastic. And then as far as technology and everything goes, I believe that first student already has a lot of programs in place, right? You have the, what's it, first, first safe, where it's like the safety reporting incidents?
First act.
First act. As far as the GPS, you know, Durham, I know Durham already has the capabilities, Durham Transportation. So you guys already have those capabilities on your bus, correct?
Yeah.
And they're part of this contract.
Do you have one more question?
Yes, Mr. Testa.
Several years ago, many years ago actually, there was an effort that didn't materialize here, but they were looking to put cameras on the buses to catch people who passed the stop bus. And there's a company that will provide the cameras, they got a piece of the, of the fine from the, from the police department, but it was a safety measure, didn't go anywhere. So I don't know, are you guys finding that districts are adopting something like that? Because passing a stopped school bus is not an uncommon occurrence. And that's how people get hurt or killed.
Let me comment on that?
Yeah, please.
Yes, Student Guardian was the last company, the Inverland was partnering with the Providence School Department in that setting that you just described. Inverland now, the Providence School Department just signed a contract with Bus Patrol. They in fact provide a set of cameras, internal and external, to catch violations. And they are signing a contract to have every single bus equipped with that. I don't know if the violations will pay for that, will be paid for itself, especially with, when you think about 150 vehicles, that's a lot of investment from the district. But they are the only ones, to my knowledge, that will follow with some contract with that.
So we have a current contract that is only five cameras. I believe the city initiated it a few years ago. And they're still on there. But our current vendor, I know it's changed, it was Red Flex. You know, it's something, and their contracts come up, they have already reached out to say that they will put all the buses, they're going to do it with the large and the small buses, they'll put the cameras on there because they want it to be a larger scale because they get a piece of it.
Sure.
That kind of thing. So I'm really just kind of waiting for a contract.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was still, you know, top of mind.
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
All set, Ms. Hazelwood?
I have a question, Carla, because I've seen this day in and day out, and as you have you, Mr. McCaffrey, on school property, people blow through that stop sign when that bus is stopped and they blow through it. Would there be a penalty for doing that while loading the bus on school property?
Oh.
Because I can say for Pilgrim, and I'm sure other people here have seen it in their schools, where they just don't honor it if they're on school property. And they're loading special needs children onto the bus.
I do remember that.
And everyone, I could count 10 cars in one loading.
I don't understand.
I can speak for that. I've had several complaints directed towards us, and so I notified the, the building builder, you know, and I notified the police department and spoke to the resource officer on site. And they said, do the vehicle be in a parking lot that rented a, or is the issue fines or citations? Was the message I got.
That might be the city ordinance. If you can even do that, I think the city would have to be able to make that illegal.
That's something to work on. That's something to work on, right? Yeah. Thank you, sir.
You yield, Ms. Hazelwood? Any other comments? One question for first student, okay? Last year you did a safety event in our district, and I think that's great for student discourse on the bus. I think it gets uncomfortable, they understand the rules and policies of the bus. Would you guys be willing to do that again this year for us?
You'd too.
Yep.
Please.
Got to get this cool, then I'm going to get in touch with my team and work on that.
I promise I won't hit your motorcycle again this year. All right, great. So first student's in for a safety event?
Absolutely.
Done. All right. Any other comments from members of the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion passes five zero. And we'll have as part of that agreement on the record, not hitting your motorcycle, okay? Next item, discussion action, approval, Pilgrim High School, overnight team building at Camp Fogarty. Mr. McCaffrey.
I recommend approval for this for the football team to attend Camp Fogarty.
Looking for a motion to adopt this line item? Made by Ms. Backus, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood. Any comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Next item, discussion action, national equipment and facility solution, purchase rec. 18250016. Mr. McCaffrey.
I recommend approval of this item. You should have information in your phone, is containing the specifics on the soccer nets.
Looking for a motion to approve this? Made by Ms. Backus, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion?
One question, and I don't know if it's to, alert Mr. Oliver, I guess, because he isn't here. So these goals, do we store these outside?
They might be in our, whether, whether the coaching staff puts them in or not, it's something that's like a doubt, that's.
Because we bought, bought goals for I think Pilgrim last year or the year before, and one of the issues there, because they were big soccer nets and there were storage issues.
Right, there are storage issues in there. They do obtain some bundles and stuff.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments from members of the committee? Final question, this eclipses the $5,000 threshold, so did we put this out to bid?
Yeah, would you like to review that?
So, yeah, it is not, it wasn't put out to bid because it's part of the MHGC purchasing consortium. There is a contract for athletic equipment and supplies. So what we did was reach out to all of the vendors that are awarded that contract, that supply, that brand, Jay Pro. And we got quotes from them, and that was the lowest quote for the exact item that applied exclusively.
It's off the MPA.
So that, that's unacceptable from a purchasing purpose.
It's off the MPA.
Any other comments from members of the committee? Ms. Hazelwood?
Attorney Hennius said that they're on the MPA, the.
Yeah, I mean, you told that they're on the MPA. And as long as they're on the MPA, we can pull off that.
And that is, can you explain what that is for the public?
Yeah, there's a number of them actually, but it's basically a pricing consortium where it's a, they organize a bunch of different sellers, vendors, whatever it is, and they're pre-approved. So therefore you don't necessarily have to go up to bid for those services as long as they're on one of these pre-approved state lists. Now, it used to be you had to get permission from the attorney general to get onto one of those lists, but that statute was recently amended. So now as long as it's a viable, a viable list, you're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All set, yielding? That stated, so our purchasing requirement of having multiple bids on $5,000 is not relevant on this particular matter before us.
Well, it, I mean, it's, it is relevant because I think what they said is they went on the MPA, they still solicited different offers, but they got the lowest bid. You don't necessarily have to go through the RFP process if they're on that.
The discussion was had about whether or not we should be going out to bid. And when we discovered that there was this sports, like New England sports purchasing consortium, it was the better option because we needed big goals before the school year starts.
Great. And just for the public's knowledge, that's another reason why today's meeting was called because this is obviously something they're going to wait for another week because then it delays the week of it coming in. And as Mr. Bull was just pointing out, this is something that we needed as well as item number three, football overnight team stay. That's actually occurring on the 13th into the 14th at Camp Fogarty. The meeting would have been occurring on the 13th. So multiple reasons for the public's knowledge of today's meeting. And this is the time that was most suitable for members of this body as well as members of the administration. So let's see, any other comments on item four here? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. Public comment portion of this meeting now, individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person with public comment not to exceed 45 minutes. Though the content of comments will not be restricted in the hope that the committee, its citizens, committee members and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for general comments or concerns. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record. Any members of the public here looking to comment?
Hello, Kristen Von Terek. I'm a Lakeview Four Week resident. I'm a teacher at the, in the intense emotional support, which is called IES program. And I have raised 45 at Warwick Neck Elementary School. And the kids go here to the schools in Warwick as well. So sorry to crash your special meeting, this has nothing to do with anything, although I saw it. And due to recent events, I figured it was a good time to come. So I just have a couple notes you're going to pull up. So in June of 2022, the IES program was consolidated. We were moved from Wyman to Warwick Neck. And we eliminated an entire classroom and a behavior specialist. A few short weeks later, the program was then informed that the two float teacher assistants that visit the three classrooms and that support the program was actually going to just be one. So in 2022 of that school year, moving into 2023, we lost a teacher, three teacher assistants and a behavior specialist. Going into this school year, I'm sorry, we managed without that other flow we did, we were able to still make our schedules. The teacher assistant in the second and third grade classroom last school year was out on extended leave. We were not provided a sub, so we were actually down that school year, two teacher assistants in total, as they never provided a sub for the second and third grade classroom. So we ran very understaffed last school year. We did finally get a sub in April for that classroom. This year we heard through rumor, there was no official notice or anything given to us that our now final flow teacher assistant has also been removed from the program. So we still have our three classrooms, we still have the same staff, we have just now lost another teacher assistant. Flow teacher assistant allows us to give our kids the support that they need in order to have the most inclusive educational experience possible. So things, opportunities to be in peer groups, model and encourage appropriate regular education things and be in with general education population. I brought with me the flow teacher assistant schedule, if you want to review it with my contact information. I've also brought some of the field trips that we were able to provide for these students that have extreme safety needs, based on our staffing. We were, you know, able to provide these field trips, which is the law. You know, we do have to let these students go on, but they're incredibly unsafe. And it did require a lot of staff to go out into the community with these students. I totally understand that the special education department was faced with a difficult decision due to district-wide cuts to teacher assistants. And I remain very respectful of the administration. I think we've had really good communication over the last year, and I know how difficult it is. But I would just want to end by saying that, you know, we worked really hard to create a schedule that works for the entire building. We've worked really hard on integration. And I believe that that's something that we're the most proud of, is that these students that are typically unsafe and not necessarily welcome into their general classrooms, we are able to accompany them and make it happen. Without this, Jack, we can't do it. So I'm pretty sure I'm close to my time is up, but I do my contact information and I do appreciate your time, so thank you.
Ms. Von Terek, could you please send to the entire committee those documents? Okay, great. And just, just for my knowledge, the principal over there at that school?
Yes, I'm sorry to say.
Has it made aware of this?
He, he was not aware ahead of time. We actually told him through her.
Okay.
So.
Off to check in with that individual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brittany Carbone. I'm intensive emotional support at Warwick Neck as well for grades two and three. I'm also here just to discuss a cut in the flow TA position. It's a safety concern, it's a disservice to the students in the school community. In the letters to the flow TA that she got after she was already informed by rumors, it stated that it was due to enrollment decline, which is not the whole picture since we technically have more self-contained IES students this coming school year than we did last. We had 23 students last year, of which five of them were integrated in their regular education setting for the entire day with minimal support from staff, and then they were exited. That left us with 18 students, we had three classrooms and not enough staff to support them. This year we are starting with 19 students, making our case loads even higher. When a student is in crisis, it takes a minimum of two staff members to help regulate them. With some students, it takes three or four staff members. If each room has only three staff members, this means that the other students in our classes are now without support or even supervision, making it difficult to integrate them with their regular education classroom for itinerants and recess or lunch. This is in no way to point fingers or blame. This is, this is a start to a conversation and a request that our staffing remain at a safe level. I thank you for the time, and my contact information is also on the schedules as well that Kristen had given you.
Thank you, Ms. Gontaric. Appreciate it. Any other members?
Tracy McDermott, I'm a TA in the K-one IES program at Warwick Neck. I just, I agree with everything that they've said. And I think that for those that are not in the IES program, don't necessarily understand the volatility of our classrooms, the safety concerns. We like to have no less than two staff members in a classroom at all times. We have three classrooms. We are starting off with the two-three program with nine students. When, I've been in this program for twelve years. It used to be capped at six students for safety. So that classroom has nine, and it has nine students where some of those students take two, three, sometimes four staff members if there is an incident to restrain. If we're, at one point last year, we had, I think, seventeen of our twenty-three students up in regular classrooms. That phenomenal, halfway through, three quarters of the way through the year, they were doing so well that we were up there. Problem is that when they're up there, we're up there with them. So two TAs in each classroom, I've got a K-one, so one's in kindergarten, one's in one. The other TAs are in two and three. So if you're upstairs, you're leaving a teacher alone. That float allowed for extra safety support for those teachers in the classroom and those left behind for the students that were not able to go upstairs. And that wasn't every day. That's, you know, sometimes we have a lot upstairs, a lot of days, it was chaos downstairs. You need those bodies for safety. I personally have not left the classroom for lunch, for a break, for in twelve hours. It's not safe. I need in the classroom because lunch, recess, everybody's out, everybody's outside, everybody's in the lunchroom. There just are not enough bodies. Safety is a huge concern for that program. This cut only happened about a week ago. I believe the TA was just notified, we have job fair next week. No, we don't. Yes, we do. We have job fair tomorrow, never mind. I am also a week off. That, so that is my point on that. I've been in this program for a long time, and safety is an issue. We have the K-one teacher that's been in the program for twelve years, has now taken another position. We're going to have a new teacher in that classroom, my classroom. The two-three classroom, the TA that was injured for a year, also, we're going to have a new TA in that position. She's out. So there's a new person in there. We got a lot of staffing changes, we got a lot of new people. It's very concerning not having that float position in there. The other quick one I wanted to make was on the move. The move and the contract, and it was mentioned multiple times, four weeks. No, you don't. You got three weeks from Thursday. Students are in three weeks from this Thursday, not four weeks. Teachers begin three weeks from tomorrow. So that move, I know that it said in the contract that there was a given date, but the date wasn't said out loud, what that final deadline date is for the move. Don't make it four weeks because it's only three. That's my only point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. Any other members of the public looking to comment? Any other members of the public pushing to comment? Any other members of the public pushing to comment? Seeing none, future meetings, policy subcommittee meeting is August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, tomorrow at ten AM. Fiscal subcommittee meeting is tomorrow, August sixth, at three PM. The next Warwick School Building Committee meeting is being held on the Wednesday, the seventh, August seventh, at seven thirty AM. The next monthly school committee meeting is August thirteenth, at two thousand and twenty-four. August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM. The next health and wellness subcommittee meeting is August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at three PM. We also have a school committee meeting scheduled for August twenty-first at six PM at Warwick Veterans Middle School. Topic of that is new high school construction.